Okay, we're good?
Yeah, it's good.
Hi, everybody, welcome. We're gonna call the meeting to order at approximately 7:02 PM. So, welcome to the Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting. Today is Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are here tonight, and the board met at six PM in executive session in James Caldwell High School, Room one oh five, two sixty-five Westville Avenue, West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that executive meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. The meeting had been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA ten colon four dash six, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. The regular public meeting is taking place right now at approximately seven oh three PM here at the James Caldwell High School cafeteria. The meeting is being streamed live, but all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting is in compliance as well with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA ten colon four dash six, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office at the Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to the clerks of the borough of Caldwell and the township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Student Representative Madeline Alberta.
Is she here? Oh, here.
Ms. De Martini?
Here.
Mr. Elko?
Here.
Ms. Mack?
Here.
Mr. De Bola?
Here.
Ms. Grosso?
Here.
So, we have five voting members, we have a quorum.
Great. So, Maddie, Alberta, welcome. Maddie is our new student representative, replacing Claire. So, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Almeda, in her first pledge of allegiance. So, let's rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Brian, do we have any communications?
There was none.
Great. So, we're gonna move to the superintendent's report.
I have a couple of people I'd like to thank from the community, the Kiwanis Club, the president, Ms. Almeda, is she here tonight?
She just walked in.
Ms. Almeda, I just wanted to say-
Perfect timing.
Thank you so much. She has the Kiwanis Club, where she's the president for Caldwell West and West Essex, has donated dictionary for every one of our third graders. So, thank you so much, Ms. Almeda, and thank you to the Kiwanis Club.
Thank you.
When we're done, if you don't mind, if you take a picture when we're done. Thank you.
Just, do you want to say anything? You want to say a few words? You can come to the mic and say, yeah. Yeah.
And we're all done, we want to take a picture of you and the board, so.
So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Kiwanis Club, we are the oldest and the largest service organization in town. We are celebrating our hundredth anniversary.
Oh, guys, we gotta clap for that.
So, if anyone doesn't have anything to do March first, two thousand and twenty-four, we'll be at the Hyland Pavilion. Kiwanis is different than other service organizations because our entire focus is on the youth of the community. We sponsor Key Clubs, which, of course, James Caldwell High School Key Club, which I was a member of, Grover Cleveland Builders Club, which is for the middle school students, and as of today, I just got an email from Principal Adamo at Washington School, will be sponsoring K Kids at both Lincoln and Washington School. So, we're gonna start our servant leadership early, and hopefully that carries through to the university. We also sponsor the Circle K at Caldwell University, and we have a great relationship with that. And I ran from my car in here, so I'm a little out of breath. We are very thankful for the community's support in everything we do. We have our biggest fundraiser coming up this week, two weekends from now, the Caldwell Street Fair. So, I hope to see everybody there. If there's ever anything Kiwanis can do for the community, please let myself or Joyce Scally, who's next year's president, know. We look forward to doing as much as we can with the students in our community, because I will tell you, being a member of Key Club changed my life. It was a life-altering experience. I got to travel the country. I got to meet students my age. I learned how to speak in front of people. I probably wouldn't be an attorney but for the skills I learned in Key Club. So, I encourage all of your children to become members of K Kids if they have it at your elementary school, Builders Club, and Key Club. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank the Blue Rose Venue in Caldwell. Ms. Kelly, I don't know if Ms. Kelly joined us this evening, she was kind enough to donate several backpacks and a ton of school supplies, which has been distributed to some of the elementary schools, and it's gonna be going also to the middle school, because I think they use highlighters the most out of all the grade levels. So, they're gonna have a bunch of highlighters to be able to use. And lastly, we are gonna be part of the National Assessment of Educational Progress again this year. Our eighth grader's at the middle school, and our fourth grader's at Jefferson School. So, that is my general information. And then, lastly, but not least, of course, I'd like to invite Mr. Devlin up to the microphone, who's gonna give us a presentation on about what's so great about James Caldwell High School.
So much is so great.
It's actually part of the problem, is that this is something, and I'm a former social studies teacher, so I can speak quite a bit. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss something that I care greatly about, and people that I care greatly about. It is really difficult to talk about all the wonderful things that go on. Clearly, that's not what, all they were gonna do. Dr. Conklin also had a very good idea to bring some students to talk. They've got about two minutes each, which would be much more interesting than if I have to present to you. But I would say that one of the things that I wanted to start out with when I was thinking about, we're talking about academics, we'll talk about arts, we'll talk about athletics, we'll talk about activities that we do, but one of the things that I thought about initially is that when I, the size of James Caldwell High School, I have nothing to do with it, it's generally around eight hundred students, but when I was a vice principal and started to think, maybe I'll apply for a principal job, I was at a school that was twice the size of this one, and I would say that one of the things that's so amazing about the school is the size. It's about eight hundred students, and again, I don't control that, but I've been in four different high schools since I started working, when I was taught, I became a supervisor, became a vice principal, and I became a principal. And I feel like eight hundred is the perfect size, because as a principal, I knew that you'd want to meet and know your students. And when you're at a larger school, that's really not, that can be very difficult, right? A parent comes up, says, "Oh, do you know my child? Charlotte! Yeah, yeah, sure, I know Charlotte." So, here, it really does give you that opportunity to do that. And then, what I would also say about this high school is that not only did I want to know the students, but I would say that something that's really, it's, obviously, everybody goes into education because they care about kids. I would say here, there is, and in the Caldwell West Caldwell School District, a culture of caring, right? We have talented, bright teachers, but if you know anything about education, you know there's an education and a science, there's an art and a science to teaching. Well, you gotta have the science, right? You gotta have the smart people who know their subject matter, but there's something about teaching that you can't necessarily teach someone to do. And a lot of it has to do with the building relationships and making connections. So, I wasn't, this isn't all the data and stuff that I would normally be presenting, but when I think about what makes this high school fantastic, I think that there are, I am fortunate to be working with an administrative team, school counselors, ESL coordinator, librarians, our custodians, our secretaries, and certainly our faculty. They have, they, when I talk to seniors and I say, "What are you gonna miss about James Caldwell High School?", they will say to you, first off, they're friends, but then they will say, they're teachers. They really will build relationships. So, I think that should be key of what we, about what I want to talk about. To highlight this a little bit, we took a survey, we took a survey a couple times, the students take a wellness survey, and in our spring two thousand and twenty-three wellness survey, the question is, "I feel that my school counselor is supportive and accessible to me." Ninety-two point seven percent of the students agreed or strongly agreed to that statement. If you know anything about taking surveys, that's virtually impossible to get those numbers. We asked our students, "Is there at least one adult in the school that I am comfortable seeking or when I need assistance?", right? In the two thousand and twenty-three survey, eighty-eight point five percent of the students agreed or strongly agreed to that. What I would say is this too, even speaking to that, in the fall, eighty-seven point five percent of the students said that. That's a really hard number to move, but when we talked to the counselors, our school counselors, "What do you want to do with this information?", they want to say, "We want to find out who those fifty-nine students are, and we really want to try to find a way to make them connect." So, I think that that's really something that's special and great about this, about this high school, that I'm very proud of. Let's see. Okay. Talk a little bit about academics. There's a lot that we could discuss here. First off, I'm just gonna really bring you up to date, really, the last four or five years, not, nothing that's been major, but one major thing that happened four years ago, two thousand and nineteen, twenty, really, we're not even into the fifth year of it, is the rotating drop schedule. And what that enabled us to do, with the support of the Board of Education, is really allow students, all students, to take forty credits a year. We used to have a zero mod, zero lunch, things like that, I mean, zero classes before school. So, we were able to raise our graduation requirement to one hundred and thirty credits from one hundred and twenty. We were able to create a careers class and a transition program, so we are, for all of our students, not just looking at our AP students, but our students at all levels, students are able to take multiple years of elective with minimal conflict. So, one of the things that this was able to do is you'll see, a student in the past really couldn't take, like, four years of art if they wanted to meet all their graduation requirements and not drop their language after two years, et cetera. Creation of a business program here at JCHS, that happened just in two thousand and nineteen. We expanded our world language requirement to two years at the high school. Something else that happened, not because of the rotating block, but we went one-to-one. All of our students now have Dell laptops, which is something that we had really been hoping for, and actually, Dr. Conklin was instrumental in making sure that that, that we achieved with the board. Another thing that we started to do over the last four years is that all students take the PSAT eight-nine and the PSA, and then the PSAT for the tenth and eleventh graders as a form of a diagnostic and practice test. We have nineteen advanced placement classes here at the high school right now. We've increased the AP enrollment since we've gone to the rotating block. We've introduced AP Art, AP Computer Science Principles, and AP Pre-Calculus just this, pre-calc was just this year. Our AP US Government and AP Human Geography classes became full-year courses instead of half-year courses. We have seven honors-level courses as well, and we started dual enrollment courses. So, we have up to eight right now through Seton Hall University and Fairleigh Dickinson University, available to all students of all levels. I threw up here some recently added courses, just to highlight a few. Uh-oh, there we go. So, you see, but I wanted to point out things, although we did add some AP courses. Statistics is a course that was not available. We had AP Statistics, but not every student is an AP student, so I want to emphasize Spanish five. We had AP Spanish, but not every student is an AP student, so we wanted to bring Spanish five. But a lot of digital photography too, creative writing, journalism, there were many things that we've offered over the past, just since we went to the rotating block. Programs for career and college readiness, we have an extensive program for that, really headed through our school counseling department. They go in, they do career interest and exploration. Our school counselors present lessons to, beginning in ninth grade, to our students. We have college application workshops for our seniors. They started last summer and then continued this summer, offering them in the summertime, so students who want to get a jump on the college application process have someone to reach out to and help besides just their guardians. We have SAT prep classes here, college rep visits, military visits, all things to try to help our students determine what they want to do with their future. Moving forward, some things academically, we definitely want to focus on, there's many, we have many goals, but increasing our dual enrollment offers, offerings for our, and our partnerships with colleges, and we are also very pleased that we have a brand-new resource this year. It's our career, it's our school counseling, it's our new college and career counselor, Ms. Pateya. And I'm gonna introduce her here right now, but I think it's fantastic that for our families out there, that we have an additional resource, someone who they can turn to if they need a little bit more guidance, the student needs a little bit more time with their, with the college counselor. Do you want to just come up and say hello? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. So, hello, everyone in person, and hello to everybody virtually. My name is Coria Pateya, and I'm the new counselor here at JCHS. I'm joining this wonderful team, faculty and staff, in my third year as a school counselor, after working at Immaculate Conception High School in Lodi for the last two years. I will be available to work with students who may need any additional time or assistance with formulating their post-secondary planning, as well as helping the twelfth graders who may need help curating that college list to figure out which schools they want to apply to, as well as helping them fill out their college applications that they're ready to be submitted on the time before the deadlines come, because those are definitely important and solid. Or I'll be available to them if they want to do some more exploring on their major choice or their career options, so I'll be available to them for that. For the eleventh graders, I can really help them start that college search and build that initial, longer college list, and whether that be for a four-year school, a two-year school, a trade school, whatever it is that they start to think about for the planning for the post-secondary plan for after graduation. I will also be here to help coordinate college admissions, college admissions representatives, so having college reps come in to do visits at James Caldwell High School, so that students can access information about schools that they may be interested in. We have a long list already, and we have many students that have signed up for those visits to come. These meetings will take place in the fall of each year and will be available to both juniors and seniors. I'm excited to serve as an additional resource for students who need extra support. We understand that this process can seem overwhelming, but the school counseling department is here to support students along the way, so that everyone leaves James Caldwell High School with a plan for their future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Touch upon the arts a little bit. We, these are courses that we offer at the high school for practical, visual, performing arts. As I pointed out to you, like, if you look under Visual Arts, there's Draw, Paint, Design, one, two, three, four. Now, we have students who are able to do that, and we've also offered AP Art Studio, but they can also do that through woodworking or many other avenues to pursue students' interests. I know I'm gonna go through this quickly, you won't catch everything. We have many different performance groups, many of them meet after school, some of them meet during the daytime, so that there's a lot of flexibility for those who want to get involved and pursue in our music program. We have a number of clubs that are related to the arts. They started an Arts and Illustration Club two years ago. They generally meet during, during lunch, but they help to work on promoting and providing some art for teachers that need that. A Broadcasting Club, Dance Club started last year. So, there are a number of ways that students can get involved, even if they're not taking courses. We have a number of art shows. One of our favorite evenings, JCR, JCHS Art and Tech Show is in the spring, but then we certainly have several concerts. Our junior class usually puts on a winter coffee house, which is sort of like a cabaret, and then usually our Theater Performing Arts Club does a cabaret at the end of the year as well. Something also to highlight here, the arts facility upgrades. The board has been generous and supported a lot of upgrades at the high school just in the last four years. Our chorus room, Room four oh six, they put in tiered seating. We were able to put in tiered seating, a presentation system with a drop-down screen and projector, and a sound and recording system to really make that a more state-of-the-art chorus room. And then, in that top right-hand corner is a picture of, we actually have used it for Music Marathon. There's a stage there, and it's a nice, small ensemble space as well for people to use. Our four, our ceramics room, Room four oh five, was also upgraded, first of the, of the three art rooms. Our digital art room was upgraded last year. If you could see, they purchased, not only did they gut the whole thing and put in new desks, but also Macs, desktops, and we got walk-home tablets, which are kind of to use to sketch on and connect to your, so now we just really have a state-of-the-art digital arts room. Our Room four oh three, the drawing and painting room, is also being upgraded right now, so it's, it's under renovation. Okay. Clubs and activities. We have over thirty-five clubs here at James Caldwell High School. That's not including the ensembles, that's not including some of the things like Stage Crew, et cetera, there's many other clubs additional to it. There are so many, we always say to students, there's, you've got to be able to find something that you're interested in. I'll highlight just a couple. Our student council, I highlight them because, first of all, Maddie is our student council president, and she's coming to our board meetings, but also, they just ran our pep rally, our Spirit Week, they get the year-off started in a wonderful way, but they really put a lot of energy, the Spirit Day themes, et cetera. I want to emphasize our peer leadership. Students actually have to apply to get involved in peer leadership, but they, these students come in over the summer for some training, they get up Tuesday morning, every morning early to get to, also prepare to work with ninth graders, and they are a bridge for our ninth graders. And then, I'll emphasize our FBLA. It's only three years young, it's going on to its fourth year, but it has really grown into one of our largest clubs. It's obviously nationally recognized, but they've been competing at the state level and nationally. It's amazing what they've done. So, we have many thriving clubs, and again, I think a lot of that goes back to our, our teachers and our advisors, as well as our wonderful students. Athletics, we have twenty-six sports, which is, which is fifty-six sports teams, if you talk about varsity, JV, and freshman level. One of the things that's amazing about the school is, most years, given years, including last year, sixty-seven percent of our students participate in at least one season of a sport at James Caldwell High School. You really, that's, to me, that's amazing. This fall, we had, just for the fall season, forty-seven percent of our students registered for a sport. We have some new teams. We had field hockey introduced a couple years ago, and they have, they have a great team again this year. And then, just this year, we had freshman girls volleyball, which, again, it's like, you have so many teams, do you need more? Honest, there's twenty, there's twenty girls on the freshman volleyball team, and if we didn't have the freshman volleyball team, then twenty girls would have been, would have been cut, and then going into their sophomore year, they probably wouldn't have had the chance and the experience to grow. Our weight room, I wanted to emphasize this, Dan Romano, not the athletic director, Dan Romano, it's actually his son, Dan Romano, is, really is leading our weight room, and they've created a culture, if you've watched them on Instagram, et cetera, but on any given day, you have about forty students coming to the weight room, and that's not including the, the sports that are utilizing it, and it's really gotten to be a great, a great addition to our sports program. Many recent awards and recognitions over the past five years, state championships in girls soccer, football, basketball, wrestling, and baseball, county champs, champs in volleyball, many district divisional wins as well. Let's see. And our football team has a streak of thirty-one wins, that's the longest active football-winning streak in the state currently, and it's currently the fifth-longest in the nation. We have numerous athletes going on to compete at the college level. Every year, we do our signings. And again, I think that we can highlight our coaches and our athletic director, Dan Romano was the Essex County AD of the year two years ago, and I do think that it, it starts from him, but we have fantastic coaches. Mike Teshkoyan is within fifty games of being the winningest softball coach in state history. Todd Romano was the, the Group Two Football Coach of the Year. Tom Lamont was it the year before, but we just have great, knowledgeable, seasoned, caring coaches here as well. Place of Possibilities, I just forgot to mention at the beginning, we like to call this place a place of possibilities, and we do, we do share that with them. I would say something else that's really fantastic is, is really the support that we have from the community here, the Board of Education's support, not just because I'm here, but certainly, whenever we brought new courses forward, the facility upgrades, the courtyard is fantastic out front, but there have been so many upgrades and investments in our school over the last couple of years. Our Home and School Association is incredible, supportive, they, they provide scholarships, they provide money to beautify, for beautification. The Caldwell West Caldwell Education Foundation, I also want to give them a shout-out. If anybody ever wants to, looking for fundraises, please use the Caldwell West Caldwell Ed Foundation and your, and a Home and School Association. They provide thousands of dollars for our teachers to create innovative, whatever they want for innovation. I apologize for going so quickly, but like we said, we do like to consider this a place of possibilities. I think that our students have a lot to look forward to, the ones that are coming in, and I think our seniors are going to have a lot to say goodbye to. When they're done, I'm gonna turn things over to them. Thank you. First is Charlotte Vibehall. Actually, I should say, really, all four of our students, come on up, Charlotte, come on up. All four of our students, I just went to them last week, and I said, "Could you speak for a couple of minutes about your experiences?", but they all have, they could be speaking about any and all aspects. They're all great students, they're all involved with extracurricular activities, and they're all involved with athletics as well. So, thank you for taking the time, guys.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Vibehall, and I am a senior here at James Caldwell High School. As my time here at JCHS comes to a close, I reflect back on how much I have grown in my twelve years in the CWC School District. Academically, I am a high honors student. I have taken four AP classes and four honors classes. Included in those honors classes, I am taking Latin four honors this year, and I have also taken on the role as Latin Club leader. I've been a member of Latin Honor Society these past three years, as well as a member of the National Junior Classical Leagues. I'm also involved in student council and peer leaders. I am co-president of a high school chorus and a member of Music and More, participating in school musicals and chorus. I have participated as a varsity athlete in three sports, including volleyball, basketball, and softball. Being a part of these teams and cast has taught me the importance of hard work, dedication, and cooperation. My coaches and directors have shown me true leadership and how to never give up on something, no matter how mentally or physically draining it may be. None of my accomplishments would have been possible without the mentorship I have received at James Caldwell High School from the Athletic Department, Music Department, and of course, my academic teachers. To name a few, Dr. Trous, my Latin teacher, has taught me how to be a leader and push myself every day to be a better student. Mr. Bobish, my director and theater teacher, has helped me realize that I want to have a future in the theater industry, continuing to create art that speaks to myself and others. He's given me multiple opportunities to explore my theatrical interests. In the spring, I was given a great opportunity to stage manage Grover Cleveland Middle School's musical, Once Upon a Mattress. The JCHS Music Department allows students like myself to discover different ways to share music with the rest of the community. I am so unbelievably grateful to have gotten to play the sports that I love, but also sing and dance on stage, as I wouldn't be the person I am today without music and sports. I'm not sure what my future holds, but I am sure that I will be ready for whatever comes my way, thanks to my time here at James Caldwell High School.
Hello all. Before I start, I just want to say, Mr. Devlin, please stop me, interrupt me if I'm speaking for too long, because I could speak for hours about my high school experience. So, when Mr. Devlin asked me if I want, went to present, to speak to you tonight, at first I was confused, that's why he asked me, but then I realized, I reevaluated my high school experience, and I realized it was pretty clear why he asked me, and it's because I had, I've had a great high school experience. So, I am, I, I'm an AP scholar, co-president with Caroline of the Class Council, and I've participated in athletics every season, fall, spring, winter, throughout all of high school. And so, that being said about athletics, I'd say I'm very passionate about specifically track, running track, and I even have a school record, which I'm proud of. However, despite being very, very passionate about track, I do have a lot of other interests, and the experience here, the most notable part of my experience here was I was able to explore those experiences, and I think that the school and the staff and my classmates really helped enable me and encouraged me to explore those opportunities and experienced my interests. For example, one time in English classes past year, I was on my phone playing chess when I was meant to be paying attention. Of course, my teacher caught me, and rather than scolding me, getting mad at me for being on my phone playing chess, she said, "Oh, join chess club." So, I did. I really love history and social studies. My, my APish two, so, APish two history teacher, Ms. Holman, she really encouraged me to continue taking social studies classes, and so, because of her, I took a Holocaust genocide class, AP Gov, AP Euro, and I've really been able to explore that passion of mine as well. And Spanish as well. My Spanish teacher, Senora Kug, she really, I've had it for three years now, which is a great part of being here, you know, I've had that experience, I've connected with her. which is a great part of being here. You know, I've had that experience, I've connected with her, and she really encouraged me to take AP Spanish. And now, I like to think I'm almost fluent, I'll get there. And, yeah, I just think that rather than consuming myself with athletics, with track, which is a thing I easily could have done, it would have been much easier to have my extracurriculars just say athlete, the, the people around me, they really helped me explore these other interests. And I don't think I would be here today, I wouldn't have had the same high school experience if I only had that athletics piece. And I'm really thankful for all the opportunity and all those who encouraged me. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Caroline Murray, and I'm also a senior here at JCHS. Over the past few years, I've tried to access my interests and utilize my abilities in as many places as possible. This includes being a member of National Honor Society, Latin Honor Society, Latin Club, one of the leaders of the National and New Jersey Junior Classical Leagues for Latin, a peer leader, the co-class president of my grade, and an AP scholar, because last year I took AP Bio, AP US History, and AP Lang. This year, I'm continuing my AP participation in AP Stats and AP US Government and Politics, and I'm also taking Latin Four Honors. Because our school is on the smaller side, this allows students to form stronger connections with their teachers and peers, which creates a stronger sense of community throughout the whole school. For example, on my AP test last year, I didn't just want to do well for myself, but I wanted to do well to make my teachers proud and show them that everything they taught us last year paid off. I'm also really excited to be a part of AP Studio Art this year, because I get to showcase my skills through a concentration topic of my choosing and focus on the art styles that I like best. On top of all of this, I've been a varsity member of the high school swim team the past three years. I am back-to-back champion in the 500 freestyle for our county, so I've made first female county the last two years. Sophomore year, I broke my sister's record in the 500 freestyle. And last year, I was able to re-break my own record, as well as set one in the 200 freestyle, too. I also went to state championships the last two years and was a top 16 finalist this past year. Although our home pool is in Newark at NJIT, we still have fun as a team at all our practices and meets and try to carry out the same traditions of those before us. I'm really looking forward to being one of the team captains this year, too. I also really enjoy going to other team sporting events and cheering on my friends and classmates as much as I can. Therefore, JCHS has helped me to explore a lot of my interests and learn the importance of finding balance between academics, athletics, and having fun. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Lee, and like the other three, I'm another senior at James Caldwell High School. I have a pretty tough job coming after all of these excellent resumes and speeches, but I'll do my best. And I'm going to start off with a little anecdote of something that happened to me over the summer. I was selected as one of the top hundred of the Coolidge Scholarships, 1,400 applicants in the past year, so I was invited to Coolidge's Centennial Summit held in Vermont. And as I was talking to all these other top students from all across the nation, some of which came from big names like Cho and Basis Schools, what I came to realize was despite the smallness and localness of our school, we have some of the top-tier educations that this country has to offer, and here's why. I think that really what makes this school so special is the environment that it produces from the combination of its passionate faculty and its really encouraging student body. I'm going to start off with my experience in FBLA, which Mr. Devlin touched upon a little bit about, but as a state officer and as our chapter's, one of our chapter's presidents, I can expand upon a little. So we're a very new chapter, but because of all the support we've had from the administration and because of the passion and the drive of our wonderful advisors, Mr. Harper and Mr. Heck, we've been able to go really far for a very new chapter. I'm the New Jersey State Historian for FBLA, which being a state officer for your state is a pretty big accomplishment, normally only reserved for pretty well-established chapters. But our chapter was formed our freshman year, so I think that this would not have been possible had it not been for the immense support we've received from across the board, from the student body, from the teachers, and from our administration. Secondly, I'd like to highlight my experience in mock trial, which I think has been really unique. It's kind of an overlooked program, but as me and Matt know, it's one of the most exciting experiences our school has to offer, because one of our local attorneys, well, former retired attorneys, Joe, comes and he comes to each of our practices, and we get one-on-one practices with real attorneys, so that we can understand what it means to think a case through, how to present an argument, how to, we eventually go to the courthouse, and how to retain composure and to successfully argue for your case. So I think this is such a great opportunity that JCH has to offer to its students that is just a great example of one of the many things that this school has to offer all across the board, whether it be through extracurriculars or academics. And lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about my experience with my teachers and their mentorship. I think this is really what makes this school so special, because of our, because of our class size, as Mr. Devlin pointed out, and because of how passionate our teachers really are about empowering our success, we've really been able to go really far. And I had a social studies teacher my freshman year, Mr. McLaughlin, and at first, it just started out as like, oh, can you, can you look at my essay for this competition I'm submitting elsewhere? But it turned into this pretty much like high school-long relationship, where he has been a continuous coach and mentor for all of my efforts academically. And he's really empowered me to go far and enabled me to win big and to really push my academic interests to new levels and to new areas that I've never really been able to experience otherwise. So, in sum, JCHS is a really great place, and thank you so much for everything you've done for it.
You guys are awesome. Thank you, thank you. Let's give another round of applause. They really... And so, obviously, in closing, I'm very proud to be the principal of James Caldwell High School. I always say that I'm fiercely proud to be the chief chief. But I think certainly, again, these are exceptional students, but I could, we could have, you know, 20 other students coming up to this podium, right, talking, talking about their, about their school experiences. And anyone who doesn't necessarily feel the same way, or as far as students are concerned, I will tell you that we have a staff that is constantly looking to students and trying to find them a way that maybe, maybe they won't be as involved as these four, but to find a way to really see their way through high school. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. I told you, I could talk a lot.
We're going to take a quick picture. That would be great.
Take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, yeah. Can we get Mr. Devlin, the students, Ms. Blackman? I just want to just take a minute on behalf of the board to thank Mr. Devlin, Ms. Blackman, everyone, students, our new career, College and Career Counselor, for being here tonight. I just have to say, it's, it sounds ridiculous. I could have just cried. I mean, it's really true. I think that Alexandra, I have to tell you, I think you hit it perfectly, if I must say. Like, it's, it's the passion. We live in the most wonderful community, I'm going to say it, in Essex County, and I don't care. Laura could quote me. We, we are, we live in a community that really cares. And it goes from the administration to the students. We care about each other. And Mr. Devlin, I think the thing that I think as a board we appreciate the most, you as the leader, institutional leader of this building, is that you really, I mean, I can just say, being a parent here in this community for 19 years and being on the board for six years, you really have taken the time to step back and reflect, reflect on yourself as a leader, reflect on the work you can do, the message that you send, the opportunities you can provide for kids. And as a Board of Education, we really truly do appreciate that, because you have opened up so many doors for our children in this community and to the staff of James Caldwell High School. I don't know about anybody else at this table, but I'm going to tell you, I want to go to Latin with Dr. Trous, because every single person is talking about Dr. Trous. Look, even, even Mrs. Elbe is saying Dr. Trous. I mean, but really, it's true. It's, it's really true. I mean, we, we have, we have amazing, we have amazing teachers. And the biggest thing that we are very proud about as a board tonight is also to Ms. Blackman, taking her new role as the head of counseling for the district, and introducing our new College Career Counselor. And we are so excited for the work that you're going to do. I mean, we are very blessed as a public school system to have a College Career Counselor. That's a luxury that usually you only get being in a private school. And we have it right here at James Caldwell High School, and we're so excited to see the work that you're going to do and the opportunities you're going to bring to our students. So, thank you all. You are four exceptional, wonderful kids. We can't wait to see where you're going to go to school. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. Okay, we're going to go on to the boring part of the agenda, so feel free to, yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay, here we go.
That concludes my presentation.
Okay, great, terrific. Okay, so, moving forward, we'll do the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. And do I have a second?
I will second it.
Brian, you want to take the roll?
Yes. Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Deambola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
Okay, now we're going to move to public comments on agenda items only. I'm going to go through our song and dance here. Please note that public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not issues brought before the board this evening will be resolved. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate an issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. Would anyone like to get up on agenda items only at this time? Is it good? Yeah? Okay. So we're going to move on then to curriculum and technology. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools' motion to approve items A through E under curriculum and technology on this evening's agenda. Great. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Deambola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
Okay, we're going to move on now to personnel.
Personnel. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools' motion to approve items A through N under certificated, and items A through C under non-certificated under personnel on this evening's agenda.
Great. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Deambola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
Okay, and now moving on to finance and facilities.
Motion to approve items A through J and also item L under finance and item A under facilities on this evening's agenda.
And do we have a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Brian, whenever you're ready for the roll, please.
Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Deambola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
And then finally, policy.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools' motion to approve items A under policy on this evening's agenda.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, will you take the roll, please?
Ms. De Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Deambola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
Great. Now we're going to move to public comments on anything outside, on or outside of the agenda. Same rules apply. We're a small intimate group, so I'm not worried about anyone getting due out of hand this evening. Anybody want to get up, Liz?
Hi, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine Ave. I have a question, because I noticed on the calendar that last year or previous years, there used to be two meetings. There was the public conference meeting and then the regular public, or regular public meeting. So, I noticed that this year, it's just, I believe, the regular public meetings. So is there a reason why we're not having the two anymore, or is that just...
We combined both meetings into one.
Okay.
They were, I don't want to say redundant, because the agenda didn't really change that much.
Okay.
So instead of having two meetings a month, we're going to have one meeting a month and see how that goes over the next three months.
Okay.
We could always add additional meetings if we needed additional meetings.
Yeah.
We just want to see how the one meeting went. We've had one meetings over the summer, and they were, they went fine, so we want to continue that at least through January, see how that goes.
Okay, great. And then the only other thing I wanted to comment was just, last month, I had brought up the mentorship plan and had just requested that the board look in, and the administration look into possibly covering those costs for the mentees that were coming in, so I just want to see if there has been any progress on that, or just to kind of throw that out there again.
I introduced it to the board tonight, so it's, we're in the process of discussing it, and there's a potential, we're continuing the discussion of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
You know, Liz, too, I just want to comment and mention that, you know, just having some history on the board, and Chris can mention as well, that prior to maybe, I would say, like, three years ago, two and a half years ago, right? We really didn't have committee meetings, right? I mean, that's full disclosure, and you're supposed to, as a board, you're supposed to have committee meetings. And that was something I have to give Chris Elko credit for, being on the board. He really pushed, like, we should be really meeting as committees. So about three years ago, we really started meeting, curriculum and technology, policy, personnel. So, really, because we do that on a very regular basis, like, we're meeting like all the time, sometimes multiple times a month, depending on what's going on in the district, it really, like, the two meetings a month as a full board really did become redundant, because we're able to see the minutes, like, as all board members, the minutes get shared, and then we're able to, like, then call the chair, like, if I see the minutes from finance, facilities, as president, I'm ex facto, right, so I can see everyone's, but I can then call Mr. Elko if I have a question, since he's chair of that committee, and I can speak to him one-on-one about things I have a question on. And then when we come together as a full board, we're just kind of flushing out things, but it's kind of allowed us to streamline the process. So, that's just a little bit of history on, on it, because it might seem like it came out of nowhere, but it was really just all feeling like, you know what, we really kind of, we're doing things... of, we're doing things correctly, so we really don't need to meet as a full board twice a month. But we also recognize we have the flexibility to add meetings if, if need be. Okay, if that's it for this evening, any more comments on or off the agenda? Sure, come on up.
My name is Priyanka, I'm with the Math Learning Center, Mathnasium in Caldwell, and I just wanted to introduce myself, and also, just FYI, we have been recently approved as a vendor from the NJ Department of Education for a tutoring grant, High Impact Tutoring Grant, it's called. And I believe the schools have until 9:20, which is Wednesday, to, for you guys to do your grant proposal. And it's for third and fourth graders, and if you have extra money, I guess it could be allocated to other grades as well. And we'd be happy to partner with you, to figure out whether the tutoring can occur in person, or at the schools, or in our centers. And I spoke to another school in Fairfield, and they said all of our competitors were offering virtual learning option, which, you know, that's part of why the kids are behind in math. So, and we just believe in-person works really well for elementary school kids, and keeping their attention is a big piece of it, and it's much better in-person. We have virtual option, too, but I don't recommend it to parents on a day-to-day basis. And so, yeah, just wanted to throw that out there. If you were interested, after your grant proposal is approved and everything, and we would be working with HQ at Mathnasium to figure out what would be the best way to go about this logistically. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Do you want to talk about the grant for?
So, the district is in the process of applying for that grant as well, so Ms. Jones is the assistant superintendent, she's leading the grant proposal. So, once it's, once it's in, then we'll know how much money we receive from them, and then we'll plan to allocate that money accordingly. I think we're eligible for like $130,000.
And it's targeted specifically for third and fourth?
Targeted for third and fourth grade, but if you, if you have additional money, finances, you can then spend it on alternative grades. You just can't supplant something, no, you, you can't, you can't spend it on something you're already doing, you have to create something new. That's what you have to do, so. Supplant versus supplement.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Priyanka, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, then, can I have a motion to end the public meeting and enter into executive session at approximately 7:55 PM?
I'll make the motion.
And may I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, will you take the roll?
Sure, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All against, no? Obstentions? Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Just so you know, the Board of Education, we are on the road. So, next month, we will be at GCMS, they will have their own presentation for everybody, so I encourage you to attend or watch us virtually, okay? Thank you so much, everyone, have a wonderful rest of your week.